On record.
We're on record. Very good. A meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, February 10th, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJISA 10:4-SEK of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. We have the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. DePiero. Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canjianno, and our board attorney, Ms. Simon.
This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has something that needs to be brought to the attention of this board that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we move on to the correspondence. We receive correspondence from Lawrence Calley of Calley Law requesting application 24:524-30-HOMDEL-Road, Block 338, to be carried to April 7th, 2025 without further notice and with the grant of an extension of time for the board to make decision on the case through April 30th, 2025. Do we hear a motion agreeing to that?
Motion.
Second?
Second, Hernandez.
All right. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. All right, we'll have that. For those of you who might be here for case 24:524-30-HOMDEL-Road, we have moved that case to April 7th. And this will be the only notice that you would get.
Here.
So. Mr. Mayor, good to see you. All right, we just moved to move 24:524 to April 7th. And I was just telling everybody here that this is their only notice. So, we move next to application 25:504-SALALE-ANDICAN, 7-PUTTINGSTONE-Road, Block 9, Lot 9, Zone R1, Major Soil Moving Permit.
Yes.
If you could come up, make sure the microphone is working. You can sit down, that's fine.
Hi, if you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Salal Andican, last name A-M-D-I-C-A-N, 1-PUTTINGSTONE-Road, Booting Township.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you? Pull the whole thing closer. There you go.
All right, tell us why you're here.
Soil movement permit. We had to agree. The new house is like slow pill. We had to agree the backyard to make a backyard pool. And it triggered soil movement permit. Not moving out of the property, just moving around the property. And it was all approved by the engineer. It's done. It's finished properly. But this was something that had to get done.
Okay. I'm gonna have our engineer ask you a few questions.
Well, this is an interesting one for the board, as the applicant just mentioned. The, let me, sure, I understand this. So the, so the site work is done, the, and there is some, this is some housekeeping that the soil movement application was not secured, and it needs to be secured in order to get your certificate of occupancy. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But all the work is already done?
Yeah, everything.
All the trucking's been done, all the sawing has been done, and, okay, so this is sort of like a housekeeping item. The work was previously, what year was the work done?
Last year.
Last year, okay. I really don't have any questions regard, the typical stuff regarding root and amount of soil, since it's all been done. The, this has been, work has been done, and the township engineer had the proper plans for, for construction. And this looks like this, again, is a housekeeping item that, that this was, that this wasn't done. And he, he says he has no objection to the soil movement application. The fees have been paid. So I don't have any other comments than, than to, just to mention that, that this was a housekeeping item. That's it. That's all I have.
Okay.
Should we talk about restrictions?
Any members of the board have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Never happy to have something be overlooked like this, but it's done.
And you had just, you, you've received the reports from the township engineer from January of 2025, the letter about the soil moving?
Yes.
And you'll agree to work with him to wrap everything up and comply with all of his comments?
Any other questions by members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Any members of the public have any questions on this testimony at this time? If you could come forward and identify yourself.
I'm sorry, you'll have to use the microphone, and I'm gonna have to get you to state your name, spell your last name.
Do you have questions at this time, or?
I have one question. You want me to state my name?
Yep. So we'll, we can just swear you. And if you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Carmen De Pasquale, D-E-P-A-S-Q-U-A-L-E, 9-PUTTINGSTONE-Road, mailing address Morris Place.
Thank you.
What is your?
I know there's, there's a lot of issues with, and I'm not, not saying this is anybody particular's fault, with the water runoff. The water runoff, I know, is flooding guys across the street. I guess it would be 5, or it'd be 6 and 8 maybe. I'm right next door to 7, and I can't tell if there's any runoff yet because we had such a dry end of the summer. In fall, everything's frozen now. I don't really think my property is, is a big issue. It's a big piece of property. It's not really near the house. But I know that the runoff is affecting people on the block. Now, I don't know if that's because there's no storm drains, maybe because it's, you know, there's not.
Well, has this runoff occurred since the landscaping was done, or is it something?
It's got, it's, it's a lot. There was always a little runoff, but it's got a lot, a lot worse. Not from that property, though. It was, you know, it comes a little bit from mine, a little bit from the guy, I guess it would be 11. You know, that side of the street's a little higher. It's built up in the back, so it comes down. There's no storm drains. So there's a, you know, now there's a river down, going down the street when it rains.
I, I can comment on that. Again, this was an application part, and when you have a single-family home going up, it doesn't get reviewed by this board. It gets reviewed by the township engineer and, and the building department. I don't know if, if the plan is in full compliance and it's all completed. Your best bet is to talk with the township engineering department and ask those particular questions if, if, if this is completed, if there are any issues. It looks like, as required by law, just from looking at the plan, and we didn't do a full review, but I see it, they, this house has the required dry wells to capture some of the runoff. But by all means, touch base with the township engineer, and regardless if it's coming from this property or not, let them know your concerns about the runoff going down the road. That's, 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 they're there to answer the questions like that.
Correct.
And I can, um.
We put out the gutters into the tank, all the stuff, minimum runoff to property. But there is a lot of water coming down your, especially on your property.
That's because, that's because the plows took out the curb.
I see like more coming out. Because when I started, the, those worms churning soil came by, and they looked, and you can see the color of, it's gravel coming down the front of the property. And I know I don't have any runoff. There's always little, but not, like, no major. I mean, I know, I mean, like, I, I look at my problems, and, you know.
You had your hand, let me do the same thing as I did, right?
The engineer has made it clear that we will have an engineer look at this and determine what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, with that, I will, tomorrow I'll speak to the township engineer with regards to the prop 7 and 9.
Thank you.
I have a comment real quick. So, again, we didn't review this plan at all, but you have a, Mr. Anderson, sorry, I pronounced your name properly. Anderson? A thousand gallon drywell? Is that, is that standard for this size property?
The size is based on the size of the house and the roof it picks up. So, that is.
I think there's two.
Two proposed thousand gallon drywells, yes. Are those installed already?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be up to the engineers to determine where there's a problem. And if, if there is a problem, then they'll propose a solution, and.
You asked if there were concerns? I gave you my concern.
No.
That's, that's fine.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you. All good? Thank you.
Any questions on that discussion? Hearing and seeing none from the general public? Sure. You have the right to ask questions.
So if you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
My name is Tony Damato. It's D-A-M-A-T-O. I live across the street at 6-PUTTINGSTONE. My neighbor, Ralph Mendoza, he lives at 4-PUTTINGSTONE. And I guess my main question is, is we never got to see any of the, any of the engineering on this property. The topography of the property has completely changed based on what it was two or three years ago. So, me and Ralph, Ralph takes water in his garage at this point now. The town engineers, Paul and Salvador, were kind enough to have the road guys come out and redo the edges of our driveways to not take this water. But now, with the topography changed, and he did a great job on the house, kudos. But with the topography changed, and nobody asking us, what's up, now we're taking so much more water that those berms up the edge of our driveway are not working. And I feel more sorry for Ralph, who's on business right now. He can't be here. He is taking water in his garage, and that's just not right at this point. The street needs some form of stormwater management. There are no drains. There are, there's nothing in place. The builder, whatever his name is, Moskowitz, got to do his destruction of that mountain. He was never asked to put in any kind of stormwater management. We have no curbs, no cobblestone. The road pitches towards us, and now this gentleman built a house where he took a level piece of property and basically put eight feet of dirt in the front of the house. And now that, that house runs down into the street. Weather like this, we get a, pretty much an ice strip from Carmine's house down to number 2-PUTTINGSTONE. And it's a, it's just a slick ice. So I guess I really need to know before I leave what's gonna happen with Puttingstone Road. It's been long enough, the road has been destroyed by Moskowitz, never fixed by Moskowitz, it was fixed on our tax dollars, and now here we are back at square one again. Nothing done. And we're gonna try and blame him, which is not fair. This stuff has gotta be addressed because we're taking water, Ralph is taking water. Who's paying for the destruction of our property? It's too much water. It comes down that curve so fast that it fills Ralph's backyard, it fills Gretchen's backyard in number 8. And I wind up with water running through either side of the property down into Danville, to those houses on the other side of me, behind me. So we, we, we can't sit here and blame him for everything, but we've got to understand what the town engineers are thinking when they allow the topography of that property to change so drastically that now water is coming off, down the driveway, off the front, off the left side. It's, it's just a little out of control now. You know, and there's only so much the guys on the road crew can do for us. They did, Salvador and Paul really nixed the situation. It was really under control, but now it's, you know, the water comes off of him right straight at me, comes up over the curbs, like it splashes up over the curbs when it really, really comes down. And, you know, we've gotta deal with it.
You have?
I, I do have a comment, but with regards to the roadways, I don't know if they still belong to Mossburg or the township. That's what I have to find out. A lot of the roads that the gentleman built, we never deed it over to the township. I don't know if this is one of them. I have to check into that. There are roads that the town doesn't have any control over because we don't own them. But if we own these roads, which I'll find out, then what we'll do is we'll have, we'll have to come up with a plan for that area. Now, I know they're, right now, they're putting sewers in, in over there at Puttingstone as well. So if they are roads, one of the reasons why we probably haven't repaired them is because we're waiting to complete the sewer project as well. So what I will do is I'll speak to, again, the township engineer's gonna be busy, the township engineer, and also our water and sewer engineers with regards to that area. Because I know Puttingstone Road, High Ridge, all those are being marked sewer and water. We have water already, but sewer. So, and I would assume that the roads do belong to the township, because this is the first time I'm ever hearing, you know, about Puttingstone Road. Now, wait a minute, there's two. Puttingstone Road, wait a minute. That's off of Union, correct?
Yes.
All right, okay, that's different then. They might belong, right, that might belong to the, the builder. So I'll find that out. Now, I know road, and exactly what road you guys are talking about on Puttingstone Road.
I appreciate it. And give him what he needs so he can get sewed.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, just a point. The, I, I recognize, looking at the engineer's report, the amount of soil move does need council approval. So this is not the end-all and be-all of this discussion anyway. So my, my suggestion is bring your concerns to town council with regard to drainage when this has to get heard there. Our role right now is only to recommend approval for the township council. That's it.
Yep. Our role is very narrow in this. But the council and the mayor.
I was here tonight at least. But no, I will look into Puttingstone Road. I know exactly now where you're talking about, off of Union, and that's been an issue for a while, Puttingstone Road.
All right. Did you have any comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have comments or questions in this case? So our job here tonight is to recommend to the council that we approve this. All right, very good. Are there any comments from the public on this case? Hearing and seeing none. This, and do you have anything further to add? Now, this closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's case. Do I have a motion recommending to the council that we, that they approve this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that, to recommend that we approve, that this be brought before the entire council and we approve it.
All right, I hear a second.
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right. You get the next step coming up. So now we move on to the next case. I might have managed to move my paperwork around. We have application number 24:531, PSIP Saxon, 7-Campus-Road, or Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 308, amended preliminary and final major site plan, major soil moving permit to construct a warehouse with loading docks, trailer parking spaces, surface parking facilities, and landscaping. There it is. Good to see you again, Mr. Inglesino.
You too, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Mayor, members of the board, councilwoman, board professionals and public, John Inglesino here on behalf of PSIP Saxon Campus Drive Urban LLC. The applicant regarding this application, the applicant is a contract purchaser for property located at 7-Campus Drive here in Precipiny, also known as Lot 3.08, Block 202, on the tax map. And before I go too much further, Canjianno raised in his letter a question about whether it's 3.8 or 3.08, and we had the same question, so we called Mr. Cassis. I'll read to you an email that he provided to me today, which we can include into the record, if it pleases the board, as Exhibit A1. It says that the tax list shows Lot 3.8, and the tax map shows Lot 3.08 for 7-Campus Drive. Both lot numbers are for the same location, 7-Campus Drive. As per our prior discussion, I advised your office to use the numerically correct lot number, 3.08. Eventually, the tax list will be updated to show Lot 3.08. That's from the tax assessor.
I think we had a similar problem right down the road on Campus Drive.
They, they did. It's an ongoing issue. I, I don't understand. And Mr. Cassis says that before he became the assessor, I didn't know there was a time before Mr. Cassis was the assessor, but he said that before he became the assessor, he didn't do the lots right. And this is what he says it is. So I, I've learned enough to know that we defer to Mr. Cassis on such matters. So I'll provide this.
Nora, move. Board, with that issue.
You'll hear in a moment, the property contains a large vacant office building, and kudos to the township, who, under the leadership of the mayor, is recognizing the need to re, need to repurpose properties such as this to provide revenue for Precipiny, to reinvigorate commercial sectors so that they can assume more of the burden for the cost of services for Precipiny residents. This project will also provide jobs for those in the local area, and will assist Precipiny meet its goals as stated in the redevelopment plan. You'll also hear testimony regarding the significant environmental benefits that will be realized from the redevelopment of this antiquated site. The zoning for the property is governed by the 7-Campus Redevelopment Plan. The applicant is seeking preliminary and major final site plan approval and major soil removal permit to construct a new state-of-the-art 128,150-foot square foot warehouse, which includes 5,000 square feet of office, 23 loading docks, seven trailer parking spaces, 103 parking spaces, including ADA compliant and EV make-ready parking spaces, all of which are either permitted or required under the redevelopment plan. The applicant received approval from the Morris County Planning Board based on letter dated January 15th. I think Ms. Winter has concluded that a waiver from Highlands, that we have a waiver from Highlands since the applicant proposes a reduction in the impervious coverage on the site. We are seeking a waiver from the EIS. This is a redevelopment of a fully developed site, which we're redeveloping, and that's the basis for the waiver request. That said, the applicant's, we do have an environmental consultant here who will provide testimony during the application to address some issues raised in the, in the GPI report. The application is nearly in full compliance with the redevelopment plan, but the applicant is seeking some deviations or various relief from two standards in the plan. One, from the maximum turning radii in Section 6.2.2 of the redevelopment plan, particular testimony that that's for better circulation and better safety within the, within the property. And the second is seeking relief from Section 7.3.12B from the maximum height of the fence. We have, just so the record's clear, we have four reports. One is the GPI report dated 2/5/25. We have the Morris County report dated 1/15/2025, which also grants the approval. We have two ARH reports, one dated 12/26/24, and one dated 2/7/25. Our witnesses have changed a little bit tonight. I feel a little bit like the Kansas City Chiefs offensive line came down with the flu here. We have four witnesses who've come down with the flu, but, but we, we have, we have a good team of consultants here. So we have Alexander Lomé, sounds French, but it's Italian, from Bowler Engineering, who is a project civil engineer. And candidly, he's worked all weekend and afternoon to get ready for this evening because a men shiriffy came down with the flu. Similarly, Dave Moskowitz from Eco Sciences also came down with the flu. But we have the infamous Laura Newgall from Eco Sciences, who I think everybody knows. Ben Mueller is the project acoustic expert. Betsy Dolan of Dolan &amp; Dean is the traffic expert. And Claudio Brita of Ware Malcolm, he also came down with the flu. But Brendan Wedbater is here to testify with respect to architecture. And we don't know what happened to John McDonough, but in place of John, we have Alex McLean, who I know will, will do an admirable job. And last but not least, if there's any questions for ownership, we have David Liza here as well, batting seventh. He's a senior development manager for Saxon, who is a development partner in this project. So without further ado, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna turn to our planner here, and she's gonna tell you what the adu is.
So there's a waiver request for the floor plans, and that really just has to do with the scale that they were at. No objection there. The environmental assessment, as Mr. Inglesino mentioned before, and for not having separate sheets for the preliminary and final site plan. So we don't have an objection to any of those.
All right. Do we hear a motion to approve the waiver as mentioned in the ARH memo of 2/7/25? Anybody willing to move that?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Napolitano. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
I guess in relation to the Highlands, municipal exemption was issued because of the decrease in impervious coverage.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex Lomé is our first witness from Bowler Engineering.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Sure. My name is Alexander Lomé. L-O-M as in Mary, E-I. I graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering.
Oh, you got that. Okay, so you'll, okay, fine. Tell the board a little bit about your qualifications.
Okay, sorry. As far as qualifications, I graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from University of Delaware. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2016. I'm a senior project manager with Bowler Engineering for the last 13, and I've been with Bowler Engineering for 13 years, with office located at 30 Independence Boulevard, at Suite 200 in Moore, New Jersey.
And you testified before more than 20 boards in, in New Jersey and New York?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we'd like to submit him as our expert witness with respect to civil engineering.
By the board on his qualifications. Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Lomé. If you could kindly describe the civil engineering aspects of the project for the board.
Sure. And I'll introduce the exhibit that's up on the, on the easel to my right here. This is, we'll introduce this as Exhibit A1, Mr. Inglesino.
That'll be A2 now.
A2.
We have the email from the tax assessor.
Right. So we'll introduce this as Exhibit A2, and I'll mark that.
And that's just in today's date, or?
Correct. Yeah, that, this is an aerial exhibit prepared by our office dated February 10th, 2025, with north being oriented to the top of the page. And this is just to briefly go through some of the existing conditions for the site. The site is identified, on the tax map, is Block 202, Lot 3.08, 7-Campus Drive. Existing there today is a four-story office building with parking garage on the first floor. The site is approximately 10.019 acres. It's boarded to the north by Campus Drive. acres. It's boarded to the north by Campus Drive with additional office uses located beyond, to the south by a hotel with Route 10 beyond, to the east by Hilton Court and office uses beyond, and to the west by the Avalon multifamily residential with office use beyond that. The site is situated within the Seven Campus Drive redevelopment area, where warehouses are permitted use. The current access along Campus Drive is through, there's two accesses along Campus Drive currently. There's a right-in, right-out driveway in the northwest corner of the property, and a full movement driveway, I'll say centered, on the northern property line to Campus Drive. Additionally, there's a full movement driveway along Hilton Court, located in the southeast corner of the property. The site currently has 404 surface parking spaces, and has additional parking in the garage located underneath of the building. With that, that's the existing conditions for the site, and if there's no questions from the board, I can move to the proposed conditions with a colored version of the site plan.
We have other parking spaces also located on the western side of the building?
Correct. In the current configuration, the majority of the parking spaces, or all the parking spaces, are located on the west side of the property, west of the building, with the building located to the eastern side of the property.
And what about stormwater in the current condition?
Yes. Stormwater in the current conditions collected via several inlets through, located throughout the site, conveyed to the existing wet pond, which is located to the east. And that wet pond ultimately discharges into the existing stormwater conveyance system within Hilton Court right away. For the proposed conditions, I'd like to just introduce, this is a colorized version of the overall site plan. I'd like to introduce this as Exhibit A3, which I'll mark. And this is simply a colorized version of the overall site plan, which is submitted to the town with the package, with the overall site plan package, prepared by our office dated February 10th, 2025, with north still to the top, oriented towards the top of the page. The development proposes 128,150 square foot warehouse with associated loading docks, driveways, car parking spaces, and stormwater and utility infrastructure. Before we go into the, a little bit of the nitty-gritty of the proposed conditions, I do just want to point out to the board that with the reduction of the impervious coverage on-site, it's about a little more than 4,000 square feet, and the reduction of the motor vehicle surface areas on-site, which would be paved parking areas for the most part, and that reduction's a little over 60,000 square feet, with those two items along with the implementation of a bioretention basin on the west portion of the site, we do believe that this is the development, and what we're doing here is a good opportunity for us to improve the environmental conditions of the site. Historically, stormwater runoff for the pavement areas has not been treated before being discharged into the existing on-site wet pond. So with the implementation of the bioretention basin, gives us an opportunity to take some of the car parking that's located to the west of the proposed building, and run that through a bioretention basin and provide some treatment of the stormwater runoff from the parking area, which didn't exist there today. Relative to the building, the building's oriented such that the truck docks and the loading are facing east toward Hilton Court. The building will have 23 loading dock spaces, including two drive-up ramps. From a parking and circulation perspective, we are proposing 103 parking spaces, which satisfy the requirements of the redevelopment plan.
Want to talk about the loading dock spaces in terms of how they're wet and so forth?
Sure. The loading dock spaces for the building will be greater than 12 feet wide and will be 60 feet in length. Relative to the parking spaces and the circulation for the site, I just mentioned, we're proposing 103 parking spaces, car parking spaces, which satisfies the requirement to the redevelopment plan. This does exceed the required number of parking spaces in the redevelopment plan, which 52 are required. However, for a building this size, I think the parking is appropriate for the type of operations for a warehouse perspective. It's about a ratio of one parking space for every 12,444 square feet of building square footage.
And that's down from 404 current surface parking spaces.
Correct. So there's a reduction of 301 surface parking spaces from the existing condition. The parking does include five ADA spaces, two of which are van-accessible spaces, and it also includes four EV spaces, one of which will be an ADA accessible space as well. Both of those items meet the requirements, the ADA parking, the number of ADA parking spaces meets the requirements set forth by the ADA, the federal ADA guidelines, and the four EV spaces meet the requirements for the New Jersey State statute for electric vehicle parking. The proposed parking stalls will be nine feet by 18 feet minimum. We're also proposing seven trailer parking spaces to the east of the site, kind of along the existing wet pond. The trailer parking is angled and will be 12, 12 feet by 60 feet in dimensions. We are proposing to remove the driveway at the, kind of centered along the north property line along Campus Drive, so there will only be one driveway in the proposed condition along Campus Drive. And that driveway will be located similarly to the driveway that's there now in the northwestern portion of the property. We are kind of reshifting, redoing the driveway and shifting it about 35 feet to the east to pull it away from the westerly property line, but there will be one less driveway access coming off of Campus Drive. And trucks will not be permitted to use the driveway along Campus Drive in compliance with the redevelopment plan. All truck access will come from Hilton Court.
Say it one more time?
All truck access will be on and off of Hilton Court. No problem. And from a truck perspective, the site is designed to consider operation of a WB67, which is a New Jersey Title 39 truck. The overall length of that truck is approximately 73 and a half feet. I had mentioned it previously, but we are proposing the driveway along Hilton Court for truck access, which is located in the southeast corner of the property. In a similar location to what's there existing, we are shifting the location slightly, about three feet to the north.
Talking about sightlines?
Yeah. So we've evaluated the sightlines for both of the proposed driveways as well to limit any sort of obstructions. I know there was a comment, I believe, in the GPI letter to talk about, you know, making sure all of the existing conditions are shown on the survey so that we can confirm no obstruction or interference with sightlines, which we have no issue with. We'll comply with that requirement. We're also proposing striping along Hilton Court frontage for a four-foot wide shoulder to provide kind of further separation of traffic from the proposed driveway on Hilton Court. We're also proposing a truck turnaround area on site, kind of at the north end of the truck court, to allow trucks a space and area to turn around. From a trash perspective, trash and recycling receptacles are, will be stored inside the building. There'll be a private hauler to handle unloading of trash and recycling operations. From a, I'm going to move on now to kind of grading away from the parking and the site circulation. From a grading perspective, the site is graded to mimic the existing grading that is on-site today, and the drainage paths generally slope from west to east toward the existing wet pond and Hilton Court. And the ultimate point of discharge from the property remains to the existing wet pond. So stormwater runoff all still is routed to the existing wet pond. From a drainage perspective, stormwater management proposed on-site is designed in general compliance with the NJDEP stormwater management regulations. I do want to know, I say general compliance from a, from a stormwater recharge perspective, that's not required by the DEP regulations being in a planning area of one. From a quality perspective, we're reducing the motor vehicle surface area on-site by 1.429 acres, about 64,000 square feet. So with the reduction of overall motor vehicle surface area, we're not triggering the requirement for water quality from a New Jersey DEP criteria standpoint. However, we do still have the bioretention basin at the west side of the site to help collect and treat the stormwater runoff from the car parking spaces located to the west of the building. From a quantity perspective, and this is a comment that came up in the GPI letter that we worked with the board engineer on, we do have some slight overages from a post-development condition relative to stormwater runoff in the hydrograph from what exists there today. There are minimal overages from a, kind of a flow perspective, but it does, it is exceeding the existing hydrograph. So there are some alternatives that we could explore from that perspective, some of which I think might be detrimental to the project and kind of trying to promote a little bit more of a green infrastructure design. We can move some impervious coverage areas around. We may lose the bioretention basin, and in the worst-case scenario, I think we would have to implement some porous asphalt measures. But I'm confident that we can work with the board engineer to have a design that complies with the DEP requirements and, and kind of meet the intent of the code from that perspective. We went with this design implementing a bioretention basin. We thought that was a nice touch to have green infrastructure on-site, have some treatment for the stormwater, and candidly, with the new stormwater requirements from the DEP, calculating times of concentration can lend itself to them wanting more impervious coverage, which I think is against what their intent was when they wrote the code and utilized the stormwater regulations a few years ago. So we'll work with the board engineer on that to come up with a compliant design with the DEP's stormwater criteria. I did just want to talk briefly on it because I think that, I would like to see the bioretention basin through all the way to the end and kind of implement that with the project. I've mentioned it a few times, but just for purposes of giving the board the exact numbers, the reduction of impervious coverage overall on-site is 4,315 square feet. The reduction of motor vehicle surface area on-site is 62,247 square feet, so a pretty significant reduction of the parking areas and the motor vehicle surface area for the site in the proposed condition. I've touched on the bioretention basin on the west side of the site a few times now. I feel like it creates a more kind of naturalized hydrologic condition with the implementation of it. Moving to utilities, utilities are fairly straightforward. We'll have water surface tapping off of the existing main from Campus Drive and looping around the building and tying in for fire and domestic service on the south side of the building. The sanitary sewer service will tie into the existing manhole located at the southeastern corner of the property and along the Hilton Court right-of-way. Similarly, gas will tap off the existing main from Hilton Court. And again, electric telephone cable will also be pulled from an existing utility manhole located at the southeastern corner of the property and other pole boxes as well. From a site lighting perspective, all the proposed light fixtures will be LED. They'll be dark sky compliant, and they'll include 18 pole-mounted aerial lights. All the aerial lights will include house shields to focus the lighting to the subject site and limits exposure beyond the property lines. They'll be mounted at 25 feet. We have nine wall, I'll call them sconce lights, with a mounting height of eight feet, installed around the front, the front facade where the car parking is on the west side. And we'll have nine wall-mounted lights as well, which will be on the loading dock or the east side of the building, mounted at 25 feet high and there to kind of shed light on the loading docks and the doors on that side of the building. And the proposed lighting does comply with the redevelopment plan. From a landscaping perspective, we are proposing a mix of 181 trees and 182 shrubs on-site. We also have various perennial grasses, ground cover shrubs as well, and we will have a landscape screening fence. We will have one along the north side of the, along the north side of the building near the drive-up ramp. That's about a 60-foot-long wall, kind of connects off of the building there to screen the drive-up ramp and the loading from Campus Drive. And we'll also have approximately a 420-foot-long screening fence along the east, the west side of the property, boarding the multifamily residential, the multifamily residential. Throughout the site, we'll have supplemental landscape buffering along all property lines with additional plantings to improve the screening and kind of beef up the landscaping in a way that's compliant with the redevelopment plan. The mixture of 181 trees will be along the various all four property lines to kind of infill any existing trees that are to remain and create a nice buffer and screen from Campus Drive, neighboring properties in Hilton Court. We also have shrubs located throughout the site in parking areas to kind of buffer some of any of the car parking and kind of break up any of the asphalt areas. And kind of a lot of those shrubs will also be in the bioretention basin as well. From a signage perspective, we'll have two facade signs proposed. We'll have one sign proposed at the north, on the north face of the building along Campus Drive, and one also on the east side of the building facing Hilton Court. Both signs will be 150 square feet in area. We'll also have two monument signs. We'll have one proposed to the west of Campus, of the Campus Drive driveway, and we'll have one proposed to the north of the Hilton Court driveway. Both signs will be set back 10 feet from the property line. They'll have an area of 64 square feet or less. They'll have a width of 11 feet or less and a height of 10 feet or less. And the proposed signage is also compliant with the redevelopment plan. Quickly, just to summarize a lot of the items that I did talk through, in the proposed condition, we are reducing the number of parking spaces by 301 spaces, reducing impervious coverage, reducing motor vehicle surface area. We're consolidating the two driveways along Campus Drive on the north side of the property into one, providing additional landscape screening along all property lines, providing a six-foot-high screened fence along the western property line adjacent to the Avalon Development, a similar fence along the truck docks to the north for, to screen from Campus Drive. And we are pushing improvements further away from the existing drainage swell located along the south side of the property. There is an off-site beyond our property line to the south side. There is an existing drainage swell, but, you know, with the realignment of the driveway to the south, we are pulling that driveway further away from that swell, having more green space between the driveway entering the site and the proposed, and the property line to the south.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll get back to you, Mr. Chairman, for any questions from the board, board professionals, and the public.
Could you provide testimony on the soil movement application? And also, did you have an opportunity, did you review, again, the township's soil movement letter for the project?
I've reviewed historically. I haven't reviewed it today, but from a soil movement perspective, just by the nature of the disturbance of the property and the amount of improvements that we are doing, there is a soil movement application that was submitted with the site plan application as well.
Can you give testimony on it?
I don't have the numbers or the information in front of me, so not at this time, but I can go back and look at some of the documentation.
Yeah, I'll put that on the record.
Sure.
All right. I didn't want to hijack, but I figured I'd get that out there.
We'll bring him back.
Yeah.
Mr. Math?
Just a quick question. The parking ratio per thousand square feet, what's it at?
1,244, based on the proposed building and the proposed parking on-site. And that's not a requirement. That's just what's on-site, just considering how, you know, in exceedance of the required 53 spaces we are, or 52 spaces.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Mr. Cantiano, did you have anything further?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got a few items.
I figure it's good to get the engineering questions out of the way.
There are DEP-regulated areas on-site. Will you be giving testimony on those, or was that Eco Sciences?
Eco Sciences.
Okay. Mentioned the soil movement. I agree that it is a very delicate balance with the stormwater, but what's submitted, as you mentioned, does not comply with the state standards, and we have to comply with the state standard. So, yeah, absolutely, we're welcome to a discussion and some scenarios to try and get some compliance with that.
Yep.
Can you go over, you don't have to go this second, I have a few other items, but considering to, on the west side of the property, there's a residential development being constructed, I wanted you to go over a little bit more detail on what you're proposing for the board to see and understand regarding landscaping and lighting. But just give that a moment. If you could go over that after these questions that I have for you.
Sure.
So you reviewed our letter. Of particular, I wanted you, just to make sure, do you have, item eight refers to, you're doing some median changes in the left-turn lane on Campus Drive. We had, since that's getting torn up pretty well, we had recommended that you do a full mill and pave of the area of that, those improvements across the whole width of the roadway. Any issues with that?
I don't believe there's any issues with that now.
Also, the sidewalk along Campus Drive, I see that you have it sort of meandering.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's to, to avoid miscellaneous obstruction.
Correct.
For the portion, again, in the letter, for the portion of the sidewalk that's on the applicant's property, an easement would be needed for that, to have public, public improvement on a private property. That would, I'm guessing there's no issues with that?
No.
No issue?
No.
Okay. And again, you just touched on it, the, the, your proposal and 103 parking spaces. I missed what the rationale was that's double the, the, the one per 2,500 that required. What was the rationale?
Typically, for a building of this size, a warehouse of this size, the developers or tenants like to see anywhere from one per 1,000 to one per 1,500. So we're right kind of in the middle of that range of one per 1,244. So from an operational standpoint, I believe that is normal for a building of this size. I don't want to use the word "normal," but it's sort of typical for a building in operation of this size.
And generally speaking, you have, you, you will comply with all the comments and recommendations in our letter?
That's correct.
Okay. Any item that you want, needed to discuss? Are you okay with all the items?
I, I don't have any questions on any of the items. I just, again, starting back to stormwater, I think we'll have more discussions on that to come up with a solution.
My, our comment regarding the existing wet pond that's kind of in a state of disrepair.
Yes.
I realize that is ordinary value, and I'll let Ms. Newguard testify to what the value is and the, and the wetlands and what permits would be needed to maintain that basin and get that basin, that existing basin up to standards and what it was either originally designed for. And I realize if you can't get those calculations and those documentation, I don't know if you have those.
We don't. We don't have the original design.
There are minimum standards required for wet ponds by best management practices, DEP. That is a condition, and we realize it takes time to get a permit. So we are recommending to the board that that's a condition of certificate of occupancy, that it could take many months to get that, that, that permit, at least three or four months. I don't see the need to hold up any starting of construction based on a wetland permit. But that is a, a condition that we're, we're, we're asking to be put on the approval that, that existing basin be permitted to DEP and maintained and up, and brought back to standards prior to, you know, prior to completion of construction.
Well, we just asked that the board indulge to hear Ms. Newguard's testimony in that regard.
Okay. And again, maybe just a little more information, particularly on the West Lee side where it is a residential apartment complex there, showing the landscaping plan and lighting plan. Do you have that exhibit for that?
The, the landscaping is shown on the colorized site plan exhibit. I have smaller, I have 11 by 17s if you'd like to see that. I mean, it's the same as this here, but I'll just quickly go through. The, the landscaping proposed on the west side of the property is, will be 36 evergreen trees as well as that, that landscape screening fence, about 420 linear feet of being six feet tall. I believe it's 25 feet off of the property line. So there, there will be an infill of, of trees along the western property line as well as the, the landscape screen, the, the screen fence. From a lighting perspective, there are aerial lights proposed in the car parking along the west side, the west side styles. But all of those will have house shields and be shielded from spilling, having light spillage on the property line to the residential to the west.
Wall mounted units on that West Lee side as well?
Wall mounted, yes, sconce lights on the, on the building. They shine straight down to the ground.
Okay. So not to be a nuisance toward any residents on that side?
That is correct. And the mounting height of those lights will be eight feet high. So they're not going to exactly, the, the mounting height is eight feet.
Eight feet.
So it won't be, the building mounted on the west side will be eight feet. So not something 30 feet in the air shining down on the residential's next door.
That's, that's, those are my questions. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question that you're asking for a deviation for fence height. Could you just explain that?
So the, the tallest fence that we are proposing is six feet. That said, I, we do have a fence, a six foot fence proposed on top of a five foot retaining wall east of the, the truck parking spaces as it borders the, the existing wet pond. So I did a quick look at the underlying code and I do believe the code is a little bit up for interpretation in terms of a fence height, but I do think it, you can read it to be inclusive of a wall as well. I'm not, I'm not really sure what the separation would be to separate those, the horizontal separation, but I think that's where the deviation comes into play.
We have traditionally interpreted a wall and with the fence on top as being one structure per se.
Sure.
And that height being the total.
Is there a horizontal separation that you could see that would separate the two items so that we can eliminate a deviation or look at separation? I mean, it's, it's a fall protection item.
We, we have done that in the past. I don't know that we specifically gave a distance. Many of these, they come in and it's straight up basically on top of the.
And those had been granted by the board.
Yes. So.
Similar situation here. You have the fence right behind the retain, the retaining wall, of course, for fall protection because you have a, you know, a five foot drop from the retaining wall.
So I guess we have two options. We can treat it as we have in the past with the, so it'd be 11 foot high fence and grant the deviation or considering a specific setback from the retaining wall that would eliminate the deviation. Actually, would it eliminate deviation because it's six foot tall fence in the front yard?
Yeah.
Let me double check the.
It's for fall protection, yes.
It's for fall protection, so we'll, we'll ask for the deviation.
Easy enough.
Yep.
And then my other question was about the other deviation for the turning radii.
I believe that's a deviation for the width of the driveway. I think Mr. Inglisino maybe have mentioned a radii, but I believe it's a width deviation for the driveway. The, the requirement's 24 feet, but off of Hilton Court, the driveway entrance in the driveway is 30 feet, and that is to allow for truck circulation coming in and out of Hilton Court.
Okay. Members of the board have questions. Mr. Napolitano.
Thank you. Thanks for the sidewalks.
Sure.
Where are they going to though? Are they going to keep going across the Avalon property? Are they stopping your property? Are they going to go across Hilton Court?
We haven't stopped on that property.
All right, that's a start. At least we've got some sidewalks over there on Campus Drive, so.
I know that, you know, historically working with municipalities, there's a complete streets initiative where you have to start somewhere, right?
I agree.
So it's a requirement of redevelopment plan, so there's a sidewalk along Campus Drive.
All right, love that. The, the, the six spaces you have for truck parking, I guess, are those refrigeration trucks going to be there?
It's seven spaces and I don't believe there will be refrigeration trucks. I think that's more of a spec tenant question or a question for the owner, but I, I don't.
Just worried about those running overnight with the two hotels there. Do you guys need to have some sort of truck approval for the Hilton Court to use that?
Truck approval.
I mean, that's not a, a truck right now, is it?
I believe trucks do access Hilton Court right now, currently.
All right, fair enough. And then the on Campus Drive, is there going to be a sign that says no truck entrance?
There will be.
Okay.
Yes. And I think there's a comment in the GPR letter for additional signage, no trucks, no left turns, things like that.
Thank you.
Other members of the board?
I do. Hi, thank you for your very thorough presentation.
On short notice.
I'm curious about what's happening with the median on Campus Drive.
Yeah, the median on Campus Drive and the traffic engineer will probably talk a little bit more about that, but we are just kind of modifying the median on Campus Drive with the shifts of the driveways. So with eliminating the driveway in the center on Campus Drive, the center of the property on the north property line for Campus Drive and shifting the, the driveway entrance in the northwest corner further to the east, we're just modifying that median to allow for cars to turn into the property.
Okay, so you're not eliminating.
No.
What's, okay, thank you. And I concur with the engineer on the bio retention and all that. Whatever you can do to make it wonderful is important.
That's the goal.
It looks good.
Thank you.
Other members of the board have questions on this testimony this time? I'm assuming that everybody will understand and that, that it will be made imperative to the trucks that there's no offsite parking anywhere. Just want to make sure that that area doesn't suddenly find itself lined with trucks waiting for something.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, because there is another warehouse going at the end camp of the Hilton Court. So that's going to be a busy truck area.
Do we, do we know who the tenant is?
No, we do not. Maybe one or up to two.
All the years I've been doing this, nobody's ever told me who the tenants are going to be.
They will come, Mr. Chairman.
Sometimes we can figure it out. Nobody's ever told me.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one more question. I, I left off and I, I think, I know the answer. I just want to get it on the record. On one of your sheets, it may have been the utility sheet, called out for future guardhouse accessory structure.
Sure.
It's not shown anywhere else. What can you offer on the accessory structure of guardhouse?
Just an area allocated for a potential guardhouse, but that's more of a tenant request.
Are you asking for this accessory structure under this application or if that comes in the future, that would be a future application? Because there is no information on it.
Not now. We'll come back for a few, in a future application if it's needed.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. No other questions here? Other members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Inglisino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call Ms. Laura Newgard.
If you please raise your right hand, you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name and provide your address for the record.
Laura Newgard. N-E-W-G-A-R-D. My home address or my office?
Office.
I was going to say. Eco Sciences, 75 Fleetwood Drive, Rockaway, New Jersey.
And Ms. Newgard, we're going to offer you as an expert in environmental, how are you usually, environmental science? And so if you could please provide the board with your educational professional background in that regard.
I have a bachelor's degree in forestry and wildlife management from Purdue University. I have a master's degree in wildlife and fishery sciences from Texas A&amp;M. I've been with the Eco Sciences for a long time. Believe it or that, no, about 30 years. I am a professional wetland scientist by the Society of Wetland Scientists. I'm a certified wildlife biologist by the Wildlife Society. I've done thousands of wetland delineations and a lot of permitting in the state. And I've also do a lot of threatened and endangered species surveys.
And you've been recognized as an expert not only before boards, but also before courts in these matters. Is that correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay. We offer Ms. Newgard as an expert in the area of environmental science, particularly with regard to wetlands.
Any members have any questions on the qualifications of this expert? Hearing and seeing none.
Okay, so Ms. Newgard, if you could please address the, the items in Mr. Canjiano's letter with regard to wetlands and permitting.
I think there's two areas that I highlighted. Item number 13, there are wetland flags along the southern box property line as well as around the existing detention basin, the applicant's testimony on the lines and the status of any required wetland permitting. So we've discussed the wet pond on the site. I'm not going to give the direction right these. The, their offsite to the west is a ditch. So in, under the DEP regulations, both detention basins, ditches and swales are all considered ordinary resource value, which was brought up by the engineer. And that means that they have no buffers. So in terms of permitting, at the moment, we don't feel there's any permitting needed. And I want to go to the next comment because that's where it's brought up. And that was comment 44, and there was a photo of the pond, and it talked about the fact that the detention basin has not been maintained as evidenced by the fragmities in the photo to follow. Fragmities are invasive, a wetland plant that thrive in unmetored, unmaintained facilities and drop prongs that can fog the outlet control structure. It is recommended the applicant's own maintenance. So I just wanted to address that. There's no fragmities on the pond. It's broadleaf cattail, which is a native plant. And I kind of brought just a couple of photos.
So let's mark as an exhibit. So this would be exhibit A4. Why don't you write A4, initial it and date it? Phase 10. Good work.
I just have a, a couple copies, but I just thought it might be helpful to kind of see what this pond looks like because it's a detention pond, but it's more than a detention pond. And it is characterized by a lot of native vegetation, non-invasive vegetation. Cattail will not fog up the outlets because it doesn't have those kind of adventitious roots that will kind of expand all over the place. And it doesn't have prongs that drop that may also cause a problem with the, with the culvert. In fact, if you look at those photos, what you have there is actually a nice little ecosystem in a very developed area. Yes. And it, when I was there doing the delineation, we had green frogs calling. We had mallards on the pond. We even had a painted turtle. So I'm going to suggest that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Right now, I think you should enjoy the amenity. And if, if down the line it becomes a problem, then that can be addressed with a permit from DEP or the general permit number one to clean out the pond. And I agree with you, anything you try to guess through DEP right now will take forever and a day. So it's, it's functional. It's, I think it's more than functional as a, an amenity to the site itself. And I would suggest that we leave it alone. But that's my professional opinion.
This may be more of an engineering question regarding the design standards for wet pond based on the BNP manual, as, as there's no original design. I'm more concerned, and thank you for the education, the applicant brought on the 18, bringing on Eco Sciences and Laura Newgard. But I'm concerned about the requirements of depth. We're going to ask for bathymetric survey and I thought that was over the top. But can you offer, or is this more for the engineer, if the, I, I realize from an environmental standpoint, it's, 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 has benefits, but is it functioning as a wet pond, engineering wise for depth of, of wet pond depth, particularly for, I know mosquitoes are one of the type things that need a certain depth of, of, of water volume and treatment that was originally intended.
I can't, I cannot address depth, but I did talk to the engineer a little bit about it because they've now put in the pretreatment. So the water that's coming into the pond is actually coming in treated, whereas before it was just coming in as whatever was running off from the developed surfaces. So I don't see us getting the kind of buildup that you might get in a normal detention pond that might need some, some depth and maintenance on it. But in terms of the actual engineering, that's not.
Yeah, again, my concern is that it's not functioning as a wet pond and, and if it becomes a, a nuisance in some way from mosquitoes or other parameters again. So my, my, I would still like to.
That's why there's frost and several.
Well, there's, there's a, again, I, I think it's safe for this board to kind of rely on the, the best practice for a wet pond, that if this thing does not currently meet the, the standard for a wet pond, that it, it should be maintained and the GP1 applied for, to, for whatever needs to be done to bring it to the, to the standard of a wet pond.
No, I'm trying to understand. So if it's, if it's not functioning as it should, then.
There's, there's standards for depth and volume and, and, and slope and, and all engineering type, like a basin requirements outside of any kind of plant life. And that, that if we're going to make, keep this basin, which we are, and that's the basis of, of the stormwater management plan, it should be functioning as it's intended under the state rules for a wet pond. And I don't know this is a heavy lift at all. It's, it's, it's a GP1. It's maintenance of an existing storm. And I don't know this is a heavy lift at all. It's, it's a GP1, it's maintenance of an existing stormwater facility. This is-
Yeah, the, the permit is not the issue. It's just that when you get done implementing that,
Yeah, there-
that will not look like what it does.
No, it, it probably would not. But it would meet the requirements of a wet pond.
I, I, but I, I'm not going to get into this stormwater issue for the-
I, I guess, our, our issue was, is there, what triggers the, the need for the permitting? I guess, Laura, if you can kind of discuss that. I mean, what, what would ordinarily trigger the need for permitting?
If it doesn't function.
Yeah, you have to get an, you may need an excavator to go in there and start removing some material. That's the bottom line, and it's, it's a regulated activity.
If you get accumulations of material in there and it no longer flows the way it's supposed to.
Can we agree as a condition of approval that if it, if it's not functioning, then we will do that?
It's based on geometry of the wet pond. And I don't have the rules in front of me right now, but it's based on geometry that it, that it meets, if it, if it's, if it meets the BNP standards for a wet pond.
So, we'll, we'll agree to, as a condition, that we'll go through the geometry to see if it meets the standards. If it does,
You're done.
Then we're done.
Yes, agreed.
If it doesn't, then we would have to get a GP1. And that GP1 would not be required to be issued until a CO was, was delivered on the property, correct?
Yeah, prior to the CO.
Prior to the CO, okay. Want to make sure my client understands all that.
Yeah.
He understands all that.
Okay, good. Yeah, it's really a function of the surveyor and engineer looking at it and, and, and checking it.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for this witness on this testimony at this time?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. In the, unlike the event that one truck collides into another and the fuel tank ruptures, will it drain into that little ecosystem that's going on over there right now?
I think you need to ask the engineer.
Sounds good.
Do you have any more questions for Ms. Newgard?
Any other members of the board have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Now, are there any members of the public who have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Inglisino?
Do you want to bring back the engineer?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Ben Mueller. He did not contract the flu.
No.
Please raise your right hand, you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Sure. Benjamin Muller, M-U-E-L-L-E-R. I'm a principal at Ostergaard Acoustical Associates. Our office is located at 1460 Route 9 North, Suite 209, Woodbridge, New Jersey.
Okay, I think you testified recently before the board. Has any of your licenses, any change to your licenses since that time?
No, they have not.
We offer Mr. Mueller as an expert in the area of acoustics.
Okay, any questions on the qualifications of the expert? Hearing and seeing none.
Expert. So, as part of our diligence, we've looked at, obviously, the question of trucks and the sound producing, so we've looked at evaluation of that activity on site with our local and state code compliance. To just, again, very high level, I'll go into as much detail as, as is requested. But we have very robust state noise ordinance, NJAC 729. There are prescribed limits for daytime hours, nighttime hours for residential receptors. And then for commercial receptors, it's the same limit around the clock, and there are no limits that apply for industrial receptors, as they're non-noise sensitive. So the focus of all of our, all of my study has been to the west for the Avon Bay, the new residential development that's in, in production right now. For them, during nighttime hours, as our site will operate 24 hours a day, would be that we would need to meet 50 DBA, DB being the abbreviation for decibels, and A being that it's weighted, which mimics the response of our hearing, the human hearing. So with that being the most stringent, that's what we looked at to evaluate here. The site is going to produce steady noise produced by HVC equipment. At this stage in the design, those details are never really fleshed out, but based on, on the distance, the geometry, the fact that warehouses are majority only heated and not conditioned, we will have rooftop equipment and exhaust fans, et cetera, for our, our office spaces. I have no concern over this project complying with nighttime limits to the west. Regarding truck operations, a bit more of an interesting topic. Now, trucks are, are mobile, they're dynamic, they produce a variety of noises. Within the truck court, we might have instances of air brake releases, backup alarms, coupling to coupling, which would be connecting or disconnecting of trailers, and then we also have driving. All of those produce a variety of, of levels and a variety of frequencies, but all are high in magnitude. Typically, we say that truck court activity would range anywhere from 74 to 79 DBA at a distance of 50 feet. So, the good news is, though, is that with the geometry we're proposing here and the layout, all of our noise mitigation comes along for the ride, right? We have our residences to the west. And if I can revert exhibit A3, which is the current colorized version of the site plan that's up. If I can point to this, while this is set to look nice for us here, I would like to draw your attention to the southern property line being at a, at a bit of an angle with respect to Campus Drive. And that you could see slightly that some of the foundations for the residential development to the west. And, and what you can see, though, is that our building is parallel with Campus Drive. And what that results in is that the entire truck court is screened from any residential receptor to the west. So not only do we have a distance of about 800 feet or so from the truck court to the nearest facade of, residential facade, but we also have a large building that affords an additional level of screening. Doing some initial analyses, we show that there'll be full compliance with the nighttime limit, and that, that goes for backup alarms, air brakes, all the other different kinds of noise sources that I had referenced before. The only one area where there is some slight exposure is at the southernmost, where the trucks are entering and exiting the truck court. And then for a brief moment, for a brief geometry, there will be line of sight down the southern drive to the west. But that, even that being the case, a driving truck produces a lower level than a lot of those other major sources that I discussed. And we show that at the 650 feet, that we will also fully comply with night code. I should also point out that that is also regardless, but we do have a belt and suspenders treatment here, because as part of the agreement with the residential development, there is going to be a six-foot tall solid fence along that western boundary. And, and although my analysis shows that that's not, we don't need to rely upon that, it's obviously going to give us some additional screening for when, for that brief angle that the trucks are, are coming in and out of the facility. I haven't talked about it much, but, but I should touch upon the fact that we have hotels in the area. They're an interesting, unique source. They're a commercial receptor, but they can be treated as a residential, they're a commercial source, but they're treated as a residential receptor, because they do accommodate sleeping. However, by 25 years, I have never responded to a complaint from hotel occupants. They're, they're transients. I've also been involved in development of, of hotels in my career, and any noise mitigation that is typically warranted or driven by the, the hotel agency, they take into consideration for their, in their facade design, right? Everyone has personal experience with hotels. We don't have operable windows. Hotels are in every, within five feet of every major airport around the world. They're, they're, that's not a typical element to have a development, adjacent development, cause that to be highly disruptive.
So, in your, your opinion, do you believe that the noise created by the project will have any negative impact on the surrounding property?
No, I do not.
And obviously, there'll be the general catch-all provision, that we have to comply with all of the state standards. And as, well, the council will recall, I know Mr. DiPiero, at the time of the redevelopment plan, Avalon Bay had represented, they had entered into an agreement with the property owner with regard to noise mitigation, which has been built into this application. So there's no objection coming from them either.
Now, one of the applicants had a, a sound diagram. And it showed that, in fact, we were, I was one of the, ones I was always preferring of the building before the shield, and that the truck terminals always be on the opposite side to any residential area. That makes this, and so I-
Yeah.
I'm happy with this. I was not happy with one of them, where they didn't do that.
I, I'm just a lawyer, I can't take credit. But I, I understand, so, yeah, this is, this complies with all of that.
This is definitely facing the right way.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no further questions for Mr. Mueller.
Any questions by members of the board of this applicant or the expert? No? Any members of the public have any questions of the expert? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ben. I'd like to call Ms. Betsy Dolan. Bringing out all the big guns tonight. Betsy was on the 18, by the way. She had no, no flu.
Couple weeks.
There we go.
Please raise your right hand, you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
I'm assuming that Ms. Dolan needs no further introduction to the board, except to know that her licenses are still down.
I haven't been here in a while, but yes, my license is still in good standing, and I'm here as a traffic engineer, which I've testified as and been accepted in hundreds of municipalities throughout New Jersey, but it's been a few years since I've been here.
Any questions by members of the board on the qualifications of this expert? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you.
Please provide the, your testimony with regard to the traffic aspects of this application.
Yes, certainly. Our office prepared and submitted a traffic impact analysis dated December 2, 2024. It's a full traffic impact evaluation of the proposed warehouse, and also compares the traffic characteristics of the warehouse with the office building that had operated on site for several years. We also reviewed the application materials for, the traffic studies for Two Hilton, which is, that site's been cleared, and it's just across the street from this site, and we also reviewed the traffic study for the Avalon site next door. Our findings are somewhat consistent with the Two Hilton Court trip generation characteristics. We referenced the trip generation manual. We're up to the 11th edition now by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And the size and type of warehouse that's proposed would generate approximately 22 driveway movements or trips during the morning peak hour, 23 entering and exiting during the evening peak hour. And over the course of a day, 24-hour weekday, we'd be looking at about 120 entering, 120 exiting, for a total of 240 trips. That is not considered significant by traffic engineering standards. The ITE and our State Highway Access Management Code indicate that at 100 or more trips in one hour, development may create a significant impact or a measurable impact. We're falling well below that 100 trip per hour at 23 trips during the evening peak hour. And for comparison, the trip generation associated with the office would do an additional 200 trips during both the morning and evening peak hours. So this is a much lower trip generator than had historically been associated with the office use. And over the course of the day, 1,400 trips compared to 240. So even though this is a reduction, of course, the office isn't operating right now, but it is a reduction in trip generation. It's not considered significant. The guidelines, again, both ITE and the State Highway Access Management Code indicate that where you have 100 or more trips in an hour, you may create a negative or measurable impact. Nevertheless, we followed the, the full traffic impact analysis scope, and that's what was also done for the neighboring developments that are under construction. Looking at the weekday morning, weekday evening peak periods, we performed traffic counts from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., from 4:00 to 6:30 p.m. at the Dryden Way and Campus Drive intersection. That's the closest intersection where we expect the majority of our traffic to, to travel. And when we performed the full impact analysis by adding growth, the traffic from Two Hilton, the traffic from the multifamily next door, we found that there would be no changes in the operational levels of service at that intersection. So while it is a small or low traffic generator, the formal analysis was performed, submitted, and it does show no, no negative impact associated with this development. You heard from the site engineer, Alex, about the site design, the layout, the circulation. This has been designed to accommodate trucks, because this is going to cater more to trucks than the office development would. 30-foot driveway on Hilton has been designed to promote the movement of trucks in a safe and efficient manner. That is the desired location for the trucks, so that they're not impacting Campus Drive. So the site has been designed following recognized design criteria to promote safe and efficient access and circulation. We've got the truck geometry specifically designed for the warehouse use. There was some comment about the left turn lane on Campus Drive into the one driveway that will be provided. The stacking in that left turn lane well exceeds the anticipated demand, but we, we carried the existing left turn lane all the way through to the new driveway location. So it's a very comfortable queuing area, longer than had existed for the office, and certainly more than probably necessary for the, the new use. With regard to parking, I know we're providing a little bit more than the ordinance or the ITE average, but what I would tell the board is that the proposed parking supply falls between the ITE's average and 85th percentile. So it's certainly in keeping with the ITE standards and anticipated demands that have been studied for this type of use. So with that, I, I think I've hit on all of the salient points of the traffic study, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Canjiano, do you-
Just a question. In the past applications, as Route 202, Littleton Road is burden, overburdened as it is, is it the intention for the truck traffic to do what we've been, what this board has requested on prior applications, is to have the truck traffic go out, in and out through Dryden?
Yeah, and I think that makes sense, because it's roughly 500 feet. That's the closest intersection, and it's easy on and off of Route 10, so that makes sense to me.
I think in the past, that was sort of a condition of, of approval, that, that the trucks would be not utilized Littleton.
Right. I think that, that's appropriate for this site location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other members of the board have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Gordon, you have anything?
No.
No, but other members, professionals, no? Any members of the public have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Mr. Alex McLean as our planner and last witness. McLean, you've appeared before this board, correct?
I have, yes.
Is your license still valid as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
It is.
And you're here for Mr. McDonough?
I am, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to request that he be accepted.
Any questions by members of the board on qualifications?
Could you spell your last name for me, please?
Sure.
Sure.
Don't mess with the buttons.
M-C-C-L-E-A-N.
If you just please raise your hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Then once again, your licenses are still valid in the state of New Jersey as a professional planner, right?
Yes.
If you can please address the two variances or deviations that are being requested in the application.
Sure. So yes, we're looking at, what I would say is the two C2 variances. One for maximum driveway width, but where the requirement is 24 feet. And the proposed is 30 feet and the maximum fence height of, where the requirement is 6 feet, the proposed is 11 feet. This is a, this is a technicality, but as mentioned before, this is for fall protection. And with that, I'll just dive into the proofs here. I won't belabor the board with kind of going over the site and be pretty clear on what the surrounding uses are. So with regards to the positive criteria, here the applicant is supposed to demonstrate that the granting of variants to allow the departure from the zoning ordinance would advance one of the purposes of the MLUL in that the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriments. Also known as the special reasons. Here, the applicant advances several purposes of the MLUL, which include purpose A, the requested deviations would promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare since they are intended to improve circulation and, in turn, traffic safety on the site in addition to providing better security on the site. Purpose C, overall, the project promotes the township's goals for adequate light, air, and open space. So the project implies with all bulk requirements for building coverage, appropriate surface, residential buffer, and front, rear, side yard setback requirements. Purpose G, promoting a sufficient space and appropriate locations for commercial and industrial uses. Purpose H for encouraging the location, encouraging the location design and transportation routes which would promote the free flow of traffic. Purpose I for promotion of desirable visual environment through the thoughtful landscaping design that the applicant has pursued. So here, it's clear that the benefits would substantially outweigh any detriments as there would be little to no detriment resulting in the deviation relative to the benefits of the overall project, which are substantial in terms of economic development on a property that's almost entirely in compliance with the Township's ordinance under the redevelopment plan. And with respect to the negative criteria, it should be clear that the requested relief would not result in substantial detriment to the public good since the project site is within the dedicated, a dedicated commercial district or corporate park of the township and is far from any residential areas. Which obviously speaks to the noise analysis that we heard earlier and in the screening. That'll be mitigated, mitigating the noise from the truck traffic. And the project would result in a reduction of over 200 parking spaces, which would allow for the site to achieve its planned impervious surface coverage of 52.2%, which is 13% below the limit of 70%. And it's also well below the threshold for impacts from traffic volume as we heard from the previous expert. So furthermore, the requested relief would not result in substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan or ordinance as the project site is in a relatively isolated area with limited impacts to streetscape and the overall project would largely be in compliance with the zoning regulations for the Southern Campus Drive redevelopment area. The Township's 2020 master plan includes a public survey that identifies the attraction of major employers as a top economic development priority. One of their recommendations calls for the removal of barriers to entrepreneurs and businesses, the business types, and experiential retail. And the redevelopment plan recommends removing and replacement of substandard indoor underdeveloped buildings. There is no doubt that this project would not result in a, would result in substantial impairment of the Township's zone plan or ordinance. With that, I believe that this application meets the criteria for relief.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Winter, do you have any?
I agree, the two deviations are relatively minor and they do improve the safety of the site, so.
Okay. Members of the board have questions on this witness, of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Oh my. Members of the public have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank you and the board for coming out tonight. I know it's a cold night out here in February. Appreciate your time and attention to the application. And we're excited to present this application as Parsippany continues to rebuild itself by repurposing these vacant office buildings, putting them to good use, putting them back on the roles of the taxpayers, for the taxpayers, and providing jobs and other benefits in furtherance of the redevelopment plan. We think this is all very, very positive for the community. And we're happy to present this application and respectfully request that the board approve it.
All right, other members of the public who wish to speak in favor or oppose to this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none. You've summed, I assume this then closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing? Anybody willing to make either a resolution, move a resolution, or have a discussion? What do we got?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. De Palatano?
I'd like to say I appreciate the fact you have sidewalks.
I've heard you, Mr. De Palatano.
I don't have the number in front of me of the application number.
Well, you've moved it, I have a second?
Second. Let me read it out?
I'll give it up. Gordon, you can have it.
All right, thanks.
All right. Ms. Jolie, could you call a roll, please?
Barbario?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
De Palatano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Certainly. All right, that brings us to, should we do them together or should we? All right, we have Four Gate Hall, Block 175, Lot 52, Zone ROL. ROL Statement of Basis and Preliminary Investigation of A.I.R. We have more items on our agenda, so we want to get home in good order.
All right. So let me get started with Four Gate Hall. So tonight, we're going to determine whether or not Four Gate Hall Drive Study Area meets the statutory requirements to be determined an area in need of redevelopment. And after we do this, we will do Two Sylvan Way also.
Yes.
So you'll hear a lot of repeats, but that's okay. So preliminary investigation essentially an existing conditions report. The study area is one lot at Four Gate Hall Drive, Block 175, Lot 52. It's a 13.67 acre parcel with a three-story, 268, 1,584 square foot commercial building and associated parking lots located in the ROL Research Office and Laboratory District. The building was originally constructed in 1988 and has had a 30% occupancy rate for the last three years. And the largest tenant will be vacating this year, bringing the occupancy down to just 8%. As we are all well aware, Parsippany is in the midst of historically high vacancy rate for its office buildings. Many of the older buildings have become functionally obsolete with the rise of remote work and corporate tenants downsizing their office spaces into higher-quality buildings and new construction. In November, I did a site visit. The property has extensive cracking in the parking lot, uneven walkways, which are trip and fall hazards. The outdoor water feature is non-functional. It used to have a fountain that no longer works. Standing water is potential breeding ground for mosquitoes and disease, as was mentioned as part of the previous application. The interior of the building has another non-functioning former water feature, which is now covered in mold growth. It was quite disgusting. There were other areas of the building which showed water infiltration. Building moisture can cause a variety of health problems and the potential for growth of bacteria and mold, strikes rodents, insects, and can release volatile organic compounds from wet building materials. Five out of the six elevators were broken, the doors were stuck open. The elevators were actually not level with the floor, so you had another trip and fall hazard there. They just had a couple of cones in front of them. In addition, many of the mechanical systems are at the end of their useful life and need to be upgraded. So that's what it looked like when I went to visit. The redevelopment law provides for eight different criterion to determine if an area qualifies as in need of redevelopment. The important thing to note is that study area only has to meet one of these criteria. This property qualifies under four. The first is criterion A, as discussed, the generality of the buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, and obsolescent. Criteria B, the discontinuance of the use of the building or buildings previously used for commercial purposes has had significant vacancies for at least two consecutive years. This one's been over three now. The study area qualifies under criterion D, which builds on the previous criteria. That building is dilapidated, obsolescent in the current marketplace, ensures faulty arrangement and design and obsolete layout. The increasing vacancies results in a lack of productive use and offer limited public benefit. The combination of these factors is a detriment to the safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community. And finally, it qualifies under criterion H, which is that the study area, along with most of Parsippany, is located in the PA1 Metropolitan Planning Area of the state plan, the intention of which is to provide for much of the state's future redevelopment, revitalize cities and towns, promote growth in compact forms, stabilize older suburbs, redesign areas of sprawl, and protect the character of existing stable communities. While listing specific redevelopment activities for the study areas beyond the scope of this report, the redevelopment of the site may be expected to result in economic development for the township and its taxpayers, which is consistent with smart growth planning principles as embodied in the state plan. So in conclusion, the study area qualifies under the local redevelopment and housing law under four of the eight criteria. I therefore recommend that the planning board find as such and recommend the council that Four Gate Hall Drive Study Area be declared an area in need of redevelopment. Any questions?
I do.
Yep.
I just, I always forget how these work. Okay, so we're only saying we agree to this and it's going to go to the council. And then eventually, someone's going to come with a plan and they come back to us.
Right, so we're recommending.
That's the process, right? We're only just saying.
To the council that, based on the conditions in the report, this property qualifies based on the redevelopment law.
Okay.
Once, assuming council votes and determines it is an area in need of redevelopment, the next step at that point is to develop a plan.
Okay.
Once the plan is developed and passed at some point in the future after that, then the applicant comes in with their plan like they did tonight.
So we're only approving to go to the council?
Yes.
I'll make sure I'm clear on that.
Yes.
Thank you. I always forget.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, first of all, I mean, I hate the idea of rewarding bad behavior with, don't take care of their buildings.
Yes.
I just hate that by giving them this tool. But I also recognize that this building is never going to rent again. And, you know, whatever tool we need to redevelop our office space, I'm in favor of.
I think the problem with some of these larger buildings, as the vacancy rate goes up, is that you don't have people in them. They're not seeing the problems that occur early enough. So they get much bigger than they need to. Even when they have regular, you know, property management walkthrough, you know, if they're only there once a week, something happens on Monday, they're not there till Friday. It's a much bigger problem and creates these issues with the buildings.
Mr. DiPiero?
Just a comment. Even if they spent the money to upgrade the building to current standards and current desires for people to move in, it would still stay mostly empty.
Most likely.
The expenditures will not, as a matter of fact, we did see that in Laninex East. The owner of that property fixed up two buildings, out of all of them, fixed up two of them and couldn't fully occupy them, even though he brought them up, those two buildings, up to standards. So it's not just, these owners are letting it go. There's no demand for them at all, even if they were fixed up. So repurposing them makes all the sense in the world.
Other members of the board have any comments or questions?
I have another question too as well. So this one actually seems to me like the worst one we've ever seen. I don't remember ever hearing one about elevator stuff. One that I've seen in my four years.
It's not the worst one I've seen, but it was pretty bad. And the water fountain inside, like, literally.
So this is a, this is a non-condemnation. So what would make it a condemnation then? How do we condemn it?
You know, condemnation in the sense of redevelopment, that's when you're taking the property.
Okay.
So.
Republican lead.
Right. The town would be.
Yep, so when an area is deemed a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment, that means that the town cannot take the property through eminent domain.
Okay.
So. So does that mean that the owner of the building asked for this because of their inability to do it? Is that how it comes about?
In a lot of redevelopment, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So that's why we see this a lot in Parsippany because of our office space as opposed to other towns that might, like, pan over doing their BJ's and all that because it's not.
And other towns have it, but maybe not as much as. It certainly have the.
Different. They have different opportunities, okay.
The difference between Parsippany and all the other towns is simple. They don't have the mass amount of commercial that we have. We're the third-largest corporate center in the state of New Jersey and the number-one suburban. And as North, I think it's North Star, said that we're not going to see recovery till 2035 if we even see one.
I did have one additional comment. An earlier version of the study referenced lot, the lot being Lot 5, but it is, the correct lot is Lot 52. And there was some confusion about the notice. The notice did have the correct address of the property, so the public would be made aware that this is the property that we're talking about tonight.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Public have any questions or comments? I don't see.
Any, any questions?
Drinks on me.
Do you make him go into the buildings too as an awaitant with a red shirt on? Exactly. No other questions, comments? Public has no questions or comments?
I drive past there all the time. I had no idea it was like that inside.
Okay, from, I drive by.
Yeah, yeah.
We almost had an office in there, so.
That's bull.
That would have been 10 years, no, 15 years ago we were. All right, well, I guess this closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Do I have a motion suggesting to the, Mr. De Palatano?
I do. I'll make a motion to send this to the town council for approval of Four Gate Hall, Block 175, Lot 52, Zone ROL, basis for preliminary investigation of A.I.R.
So we find that it qualifies?
Yes, I think it qualifies, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Barbario?
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. All right, if you could call a roll, please?
Barbario?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
De Palatano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yep. All right, that moves us on to Two Sylvan Way Study Area for Statement of Basis for Investigation and Maps for Non-Condemnation Preliminary Redevelopment Investigation for an Area in Need of Redevelopment.
All right, so similar to Four Gate Hall. Two Sylvan Way is a six-acre parcel. It's Lot 202, Lot 1.1. It's a three-story, 54,000-square-foot commercial office. It's a three-story, 54,000-square-foot commercial office building, has associated parking lots, and is also in the R O L district. This building was constructed in 1977 and last renovated in 88. It's of the brutalist style of architecture, being very blocky with poorly placed windows, which result in a very dark interior. It has a weird kind of split-level design. It's kind of built into the hill, so only one of the entrances is accessible for people with mobility issues. The other one enters into a split-level staircase. There's also some disconnection on the two sides of the building. In order to go from one side of the third story to the other, you have to go back down to the ground floor. So as previously discussed, we know Parsippany has a high vacancy rate, and this particular building is very antiquated in its style and design, making it truly functionally obsolete in the marketplace. The occupancy rate has been 35% or less for the last 15 years. They are also losing additional tenants this year, and projected occupancy rate by the end of the year is 18%. So we did another site visit in November. There were evidence of leaks, water damage, and mold in the building. The basement had previously flooded due to a broken water line severely damaging the electric switch gear, which requires replacement. The same issues in regards to building moisture would apply here, too. Additionally, the roof and HVAC systems are reaching the end of their useful life cycle and will need to be replaced. Parking lot showed some cracking. Exterior structures like the trash enclosure and picnic tables were in disrepair. So again, we've got eight criteria, and this property needs to qualify for one, and it qualifies under four. The same four as the previous criterion, A for the generality of buildings being substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, and obsolescent. B for the significant vacancies for at least two consecutive years, 35% over 15 years, I think clearly qualifies. And the study also qualifies under criterion D, which, again, building dilapidated, obsolescent in the current marketplace, and faulty arrangement, design, and all the obsolete layout, has resulted in increased vacancies and is limited public benefit. And finally, under criterion H, again, it's in the P A 1 Metropolitan Planning Area of the State Plan, which is intended for much of the state's redevelopment and revitalization. So, again, this qualifies under the local redevelopment housing law, under four criteria, and I would also recommend that, the board recommends to the council that it be deemed an area in need of redevelopment.
Any questions? Mr. Matt?
So is brutalist-style architecture really a thing?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
I mean, I don't know that this is, I'll put on my brief study in architecture school, that it is a strictly brutalist structure, but definitely has a lot of the same callings of it. It's that kind of, it's like rough and blocky and-
Okay.
Yeah. And I think I also say in the report that it, brutalist style, like, was out of vogue by the early 80s, so it really, like, came in at the end, and it was, like, out of style before, you know, it got very far.
I thought it was developed in the 20s or 30s in German.
It was, yeah. No, it'd been around for a while, but its heyday was over around that time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, can we confirm that the two, the two tenants are now gone? It says here they'll be vacating by the end of 2025, January 2025?
I don't have that information. We would have to consult with-
I know, one of the companies is a thriving company. It's an authentication service, and then I'm wondering why, I mean, I guess it's just going to go-
Well, I think one of them had some space in the basement, which was flooded, and that was an ongoing issue. So I think that was one that was slated to leave.
Okay.
J D A, isn't it?
J S A, yeah. James Spence, yeah. Just, they're pretty active on social media. I never saw them write anything about, you know, that they're leaving New Jersey, but maybe they're staying in Jersey, just Parsippany. Could be.
Might just be that building.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members of the board have any questions on this? On the ruling for the qualifications? Any members of the public? Hearing and seeing none. I'm going to close the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing and ask for a motion. My usual motion makers are not here tonight.
I'll make a motion, send it to the town council to approve the Two Sylvan, Lot 202, Lot, I'm sorry, Lot 1.1, Zone R O L.
All right. One second.
Good, Julie can have it.
Thanks.
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
All right. Now, if nothing else, on our agenda tonight, do I have a motion?
Let's do a jar.
Anybody oppose?
No, no meaning to that, there is a simple one.
I want to start a meeting up, so I'll move it.
No, I know I can, you know, more than one person, so it's-